Ready to go? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Blue Lake City Council meeting, our regular meeting of Tuesday, May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four. Please join us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you establish a quorum of council, please?
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Mayor Potentia.
Present.
Councilmember McKay.
Here.
Councilmember Stefani.
Here.
Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
And all are present. Thank you. And we are on item three, approval of the agenda. I'll start with councils. Is there anyone that would like to move anything around? See anything that needs to be changed?
Okay, good.
And... So, uh, to audience, is anyone in the audience here for a particular item? Lori Ponti?
We're asking if you want to change anything.
Public comment. Do you want to change something on the agenda?
I do.
Okay, what did you want to change?
In the correspondence that I have, um, that's in the agenda, I just want to complete the conversation.
Okay, well, we, we have, we have that conversation.
We don't, you don't have all of this.
Oh, I thought we had all of it.
Give me the remainder of that conversation.
Well, I guess that can happen during correspondence, then.
You can take, yeah, you can give her a cover now.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, you can give it to us now.
We have to wait to speak for it, or do you?
No, because that's an agenda item.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At the agenda.
When we reach that item, we will go through that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I do have a copy for, um, anybody in, um, staff that should have it.
Item eleven. Okay, now we will proceed.
Well, sorry, one question. Will it be added to the correspondence?
It will be. We will see how we're doing with time when we get to that point. We will hopefully be able to read everything in correspondence. So, thank you. All right, um, back to council. Does anyone want to change anything in the agenda from the audience? Okay, back to council for the approval of the agenda. I need a motion.
I move that, that we approve the agenda as it stands.
I second.
Motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Chris Edgar to approve the agenda as it stands. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, we have an agenda. We are on item four, a public comment. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake. That is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to fifteen minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here for public comment? Mr. Sawatsky, and then Scott, and then Becky.
And Julie.
And someone on Zoom.
Julie, thank you.
All right.
We're good to go. Thank you so much, Kent Sawatsky. I appreciate the ability to speak here today. Later on in the meeting, I will, uh, you will be reading something to the record, and I will deal with it further at that time. But I also, since I was precluded from putting this on the agenda, uh, for some reason, I'm going to be putting you on notice at this time, that, uh, the, uh, manner in which you allocate your, uh, staff's time to different funds such as the sewer and water is being done in a fraudulent manner. And now it's your obligation to, uh, go ahead and investigate that, because this is not a small issue. This is something that ratepayers may, uh, receive a whole bunch of refunds on, and I highly recommend that you check into that on your own. I've done a lot of research, and that will be an assertion. In my world, it's called politics, and people give me names. They've given me the name of a, a public meeting enthusiast. Uh, that was done by Ryan Burns, kind of tongue-in-cheek to kind of make fun of me. And then, of course, Mike Wilson gave me the name of, uh, oh, what was it? I have a hard time remembering what was. Oh, Agent of Chaos. And so I've owned those names. And so now, uh, I have a website, which I'm in control of, called THC. And so we're going to be naming some of you people for what you're on. And, uh, so, uh, it's kind of a contest. People can give me different suggestions and stuff. But, uh, I feel your city manager will probably be Little Miss Whiny Pants. Uh, I feel that, uh, and of course, we have the right to make this comment. You guys have to take it, basically, because I'm not threatening violence. Uh, your mayor, uh, as referred to by her quote teachers with idle brain or addle brain, and Rex Bone the other day was mentioned to be, uh, air. I meant to use that one arrogant ignorant root. And that's what I think, uh, Elizabeth McKay will be named as. So I will be informal things, uh, referring to you things such as the supervisors meeting by those names. I will define the names, and then we get like HPOG and things like that. We will use that. So that's part of the prerogative we have as, as, uh, people in the public. I have a major problem, and I think you'll find you have a major problem with your hiring of a, you know, a city council member, being an employee. Having spoken with all the different entities out there, and that means thirty seconds left. Can you, what does that mean?
Your time is up.
It started the time. Well, I, I won't go starting now, so I won't take another three minutes. But I feel this is a totally inappropriate thing. You cannot have guidelines, which you have here, if you read them. I don't know if you even know the guidelines. But the, the staff, the city council members are really not to communicate with staff. And how can somebody work and not communicate with their coworkers? There's, there's just a major conundrum here. Everybody I've spoken to in all other municipalities have said, have, have said they have never heard of this before. It was alleged by, uh, Chris here, that there was somebody on the, uh, Fortuna City Council. That was not true. And then, so I did an email to the, uh, to the Ferndale one, and that's not true also. They said, we definitely do not have anybody on the city council who's an employee. You're, you're in for a major problem with this situation. Highly recommend that you, uh, read the, the comments that I made to you. And I recommend you consult with your attorney regarding this major conflict of interest. Uh, it's perceived to be nothing but payback. And so Chris Edgar, I, I, his opinion, my opinion, he is a, I guess you call it brown-nosing, and, uh, there's one other term for it also, but, but it's basically to get a job, basically doing everything he can to support Manny. Now he has a job, so come to fruition. One of my first communications with him, he didn't want to work with Caltrans anymore. What a coincidence. He's been very helpful for Manny, and now he's getting, uh, paid back, I guess is what it is. So thank you, my opportunity to speak. You have some major legal issues that are coming forward. And I hopefully, hopefully you will start paying attention to a little bit of what the public says.
Our next speaker is Scott. Is that your name, Scott? Becky?
Hi. So, here we are again. Um, I'm standing here once again to voice my concern about canceling commissions on city employees. Last year in June, I stood before you as a city employee who was applying for a commission, expressing concern that this could possibly show favoritism to city projects or have influence in those decisions. That person at the time was not put on the commission. And now you've got a city council member also being a public works employee. Basically, you have a city manager supervising an employee who supervises the city manager. In making decisions for the budget, managers review wages or benefits. He will have to excuse himself from those items, because they could, in the long run, be a major conflict of interest. For the city to hire a city council, sitting council member and not ask him to step down, shows a blatant disregard for appropriate and ethical standards. So in the view of the public and the fair ethical practices of the state of California, we are asking that Christopher Edgar step down as council member. Thank you.
Julie?
How can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. Uh, I'd like to compliment the gentleman, very, um, user-friendly of the county commission, and I would love to think of that as a ball for, um, to make sure that's happening, and that everybody has a good fun safe weekend, um, on the regular, serving people. The last moment of the week is not before dawn, and that needs to be done. If you'll never buy counsel, um, if I'm not shooting this in the middle of the time, then meetings are going to never actually be uploaded in twelve.
Recording in progress.
So we can all work there, yeah. Um, but we should be uploading meetings in twelve, from humble for our big stuff, then. Uh, um, yeah, I'm getting a little excited, but for now, I am remaining on people and present our economic results, meeting or comparing, thinking about the same three different things. Uh, but the, the project exams, that was actually given out prior to meeting local, something like the, um, to another bit for the, for the county. Um, try to repeat as any of our local organizations are creating it. Um, I don't think it would be great to operate, not to have that at the home, and not to have it tonight. Um, so you got something you should be putting on the webpage, um, all this money, because it has to be public. I think that you have two members, um, in there tonight, that, um, moving correspondence puts up, and we have them up, what is happening in that video? They're there in, in person, and I think the council, it would have been like things that they would have agreed to come to dial off at the end of the evening. Okay, thank you, guys. I appreciate everything you're doing. Stay pretty much.
Thank you. Uh, Scott?
I'd like to address these comments to Councilman Edgar. Now that you're a city employee, there are important issues relating to the city budget, how that budget affects employees, and other projects within the fiscal, you know, reviews, that I think will, um, provide ample opportunity for the appearance of a conflict. It will make routine city business more difficult, and your continued service on the council will prove to be a distraction. For that reason, I urge you to consider resignation.
And there's someone else on, is that right? Verdo Winona?
I don't know.
Winona Pitts.
Winona Pitts.
Hi, I just kind of want to, uh, reiterate what Julie said regarding that, uh, master plan for the Powers Creek District. When I heard that, I thought that, I actually thought it might be worth saying, um, that no one in Blue Lake had seen it yet, but it seems to be true. And I'm not really sure why no other council would be a little bit disturbed by that, uh, as well. Um, obviously, the management should have seen it. Obviously, you all should have seen it, um, before anyone else was seeing it. Or maybe there could be clarification as to why, um, why you didn't, and why they didn't, and why it would go out of, uh, Blue Lake first. Maybe we need educated. Um, yeah, that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Winona. Any other public comments? Marty?
Marty Granger, on the conflict of the hiring, I, I just feel that it isn't right. It doesn't seem right. It doesn't seem fair to any others that might have been wanting this job. So I just don't feel good about it.
Any other public comments? As these are not agenda items, we cannot address the comments during public comments, so we will move on then. Um, item five, Alzheimer's Month Proclamation. Is there someone here from Alzheimer's? Okay, now I recognize the purple outfit. Very good. All right. Very good. Um, the Alzheimer's Association has invited the city of Blue Lake to participate in the longest day on June twenty first in recognition of the impacts that Alzheimer's has on individuals, families, and communities. During the longest day, that, of course, the longest day of the year as well, the city and our residents are encouraged to participate in a fundraising activity in support of Alzheimer's awareness and/or to wear purple as a visible show of support. As part of this request, the Alzheimer's Association has presented the city council with a proclamation to proclaim the month of June as National Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. We have that proclamation with us this evening. Um, did you want to make any remarks in addition to this?
I was just going to thank you.
Okay, soon as we do. All right. Um, what is the pleasure of the council? Do you want to pass this first? Um, we all have public input, of course.
After public input first.
Can we move? We could have move in second, and then public input.
Okay, I'll move that we do. That we have proclaimed June twenty fourth, twenty, June twenty first, two thousand and twenty four, as National Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. Well, the whole month, I guess, not just the day.
Yeah. Okay, motion was made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Angela Shaw. Is there any further comment from council? Is there any comment from the public? Yes. And there's a hand up there.
It's Julie Christie.
Kent Sawatsky, I'm seventy years old. Really appreciate the Alzheimer's thing. All of us in this category have friends and family members who are afflicted by this, and it's very difficult. Parkinson's disease, it seems to be kind of related, kind of the same symptoms. And I have a brother-in-law who's had that for many years. My sister's taking care of him. I was speaking today with a very good friend, and, uh, and, uh, his wife is mostly speaking because he has Alzheimer's, and he can barely communicate anymore. Very sad. So he, he was a pardon duck hunter. Now he can't duck hunt. So he goes out and he talks to the duck hunters, and he, he does bird watching instead. So it's very important for people to understand the consequence we have upon our society and, and the need to understand people that have that. And, uh, uh, as other people get older, sometimes I see signs of, uh, early Alzheimer's, actually in chairs sometimes. So anyway, thank you, my opportunity to speak on this topic.
Is there someone on Zoom?
It's Julie.
Julie?
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to thank, um, the council and for having the proclamation, um, letting, you know, uh, to my grandmother's, her Alzheimer's. And if it gives hardship on any family, and, um, I think one thing is very important, is a notification on some folks. Um, it's something that really can go undiagnosed for a minute, and, um, all the supportive care, maybe the visual can get, um, sooner the better, you know, for the family. And during the, 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 so things that go around, you know, in my heart, and with my dedication out there as possible, with my expression, um, um, when we have, if there's time, it can be put out. So, thank you again. So have a good, so be good.
Is there any other public comment? Justin?
So I don't usually make public comments, so this is kind of new for me. But when I saw this on your agenda, I knew I had to speak up. Um, as many of you know, I lost my grandmother not long ago, and she suffered from Alzheimer's and dementia. I'm actually thankful that we lost her to her CLPD versus Alzheimer's. Um, Alzheimer's is one of the worst things to ever watch anyone go through. My grandmother was the one person you would call if you wanted a phone number, because she had everyone's phone number memorized. And for her to not be able to do that was one of the hardest things to see someone go through. And I'm really thankful that you guys would, I hope you guys really do make this happen, because it's very important for those of us that did suffer and watch our family suffer through it. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you. Any other comments on this from the public? Then I'll come back for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, it passes. City of Blue Lake National Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, June two thousand and twenty four. Whereas there are more than seven million Americans living with Alzheimer's dementia today, a figure that is expected to grow to as many as fourteen million by two thousand and fifty, if scientists do not develop a cure or effective treatment. And whereas one in three seniors dies with Alzheimer's or another dementia, it kills people more than breast cancer and prostate cancer combined. Between two thousand and two thousand and twenty one, deaths from heart disease have decreased two point one percent, while deaths from Alzheimer's disease, disease have increased fourteen percent.
Hundred and forty one.
Hundred and forty one percent. Thank you. Whereas the lifetime risk for Alzheimer's at age forty five is one in five for women and one in ten for men. And whereas more than eleven million Americans provide unpaid care for people with Alzheimer's or other dementia, in two thousand and twenty three, these caregivers provided more than eighteen billion hours of care valued at nearly three hundred and forty seven billion dollars. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is a local issue, our friends and neighbors need access to support services and resources to lessen the disease's impacts. In Humboldt County, it is estimated that three thousand, three hundred and eighty-four people currently live with Alzheimer's and related dementia. There are another seven thousand, six hundred caregivers who are caring for a loved one with Alzheimer's. And whereas fewer than one in five Americans are familiar with mild cognitive impairment, MCI, which can be an early stage of Alzheimer's, ninety percent of physicians say it's important to diagnose MCI due to Alzheimer's, but over half say they are not fully comfortable making that diagnosis. And whereas during June, the Alzheimer's Association invites Humboldt County residents to participate in the longest day on June twenty first, held annually on the summer solstice, the longest day invites participants to fight the darkness of Alzheimer's through a fundraising activity of their choice, or by wearing purple. Now therefore be it proclaimed that this, by the city, by, by the city council, the city of Blue Lake recognizes June two thousand and twenty four as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. The council thanks the Alzheimer's Association for providing services to people and families coping with dementia dated May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four. Do you have a copy of this for tonight, or we'll just get it, we'll get it over to you? We'll get it over to you. Yeah.
Oh, yes, of course.
My name's Rhonda Johnson. I lost my husband to Alzheimer's last year. He was sixty-seven years old. I want to thank you, Mayor Jones, and the council for this proclamation. You can help us achieve our goal of a world without Alzheimer's or other types of dementia by participating in the Walk for Alzheimer's in either by forming a, um, team, or volunteering on the day of the event, or joining the walk committee, or doing all three. Um, the walk will be held Saturday, October nineteenth, at the Adorni Center in Eureka. To get involved, Google ALS Humboldt Walk. That's A-L-Z Humboldt Walk. Thank you very much for the proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that was item five. We are moving now on to item six. Resolution number one, two, two, nine, a resolution of city council approving a parcel map and accepting a dedication of an easement and authorizing the city manager to take any further acts that may be necessary.
I'm going to recuse myself, because my, um, my daughter and son-in-law are partners with the Eliasis.
Oh.
Not on this project, but in other ways, so I'm just going to step out.
I'll come get you when we step out for a minute. Okay. So at the June tenth, two thousand and nineteen Planning Commission meeting, the commission approved a tentative parcel map for Casey and Stacia Eliason for a minor subdivision, um, to create three new lots. The applicant has prepared the parcel map, and it was reviewed by the city engineer and approved by the planning commission at their May twentieth, two thousand and twenty four meeting. The applicant has also begun construction of the improvements for the subdivision per the subdivision improvement agreement with the city. Prior to recording of the parcel map, the city council needs to review and approve the parcel map and accept the offers of dedication to the city of Blue Lake that are shown on the parcel map, which includes the following, what they're calling parcel J, an easement for ingress, egress, and public utilities along the east two feet of the subdivized property. Uh, did you want to add to this, Gary? This is Gary Reese, our city planner.
Hear me all right?
Yeah, so I'm Gary Reese. Work as a consulting city planner for the city of Blue Lake, and our firm also provides the city engineering services. So this is kind of the tail end of this minor subdivision process. Um, as you noted, the planning commission's already approved the tentative parcel map and the conditional use permit for the proposed residential units. That happened in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, these folks have entered into a subdivision improvement agreement with the city. They've actually already started constructing some of the improvements. This is kind of one of the last final steps. Uh, they have prepared their parcel map. It's been reviewed by our, our senior surveyor, and they've determined it's uh, substantially consistent with the tentative parcel map, and that it's consistent with the, uh, city subdivision code, as well as the subdivision map act. And it was reviewed, uh, by the planning commission at their May twentieth meeting for consistency with the tentative parcel map. Uh, we note in our presentation there, there was a few deviations from the approved tentative map, mostly related to easements being moved around a little bit. Uh, their detention basin was adjusted slightly in shape and size, uh, things like that. And then, of course, this parcel J that the city would be accepting the offer of dedication on is something that was requested by the city for the truck route project. It's, it's a two-foot little linear strip behind the back of driveway that's needed, so that that driveway will meet ADA standards. Um, so that's essentially what's before you tonight. So the final action on this is being taken by the city council in reviewing and approving, uh, the parcel map and then accepting that offer of dedication.
Thank you, Gary. I'm going to start with asking the council if they have any questions, and I'll open it up for public. Does anyone have any questions from the council concerning this?
I do. Um, I'm, I'm a little confused. The documents that we have in our packet are kind of microscopic, so I'm not sure that I really understand, um, this change. Um, so is there, other than this easement, is there a substantial difference between this parcel map and the parcel map from two thousand and nineteen?
There, there is not, uh, a substantial difference. The, uh, size and shapes of the parcels on the tentative parcel map are the same on the parcel.
Okay.
The structure is essentially all in the same place. Um, what they moved around really in easements, they removed some of the reciprocal easements. They actually had some for parcels one through three that were meant to be reciprocal between the parcels for parking and access. But that was really intended for when they wanted to do fourplexes on all three parcels access from Greenwood. Uh, they actually abandoned that, um, total. They just want to do a single-family residence and ADU on two of them, and that negated the need for having those reciprocal easements. Uh, those parcels and those potential residential units could be easily accessed from this private road they're proposing without the need for those easements. So that was the primary change. Another one of the, uh, easements for like the detention basin was adjusted slightly. They did kind of a preliminary design for the detention basin, but once their engineer prepared the final improvement plans, it was adjusted slightly, so the easement adjusted. Uh, and then also, the city asked for an easement that wasn't previously anticipated as part of the truck route project, to make sure there was adequate room for the ADA improvements needed uh, at the lot frontage along Greenwood. So those are the primary changes. Um, a tentative parcel map is, they use the term tentative for a reason, because you can make changes. Um, they're usually minor, such as the changes proposed here. If they were substantial, like they want to create more lots, or they're completely changing the configuration of lots, infrastructure's going in different places. Those are more substantial changes. None of that really applies here, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council before I open it up to public?
This has been a long time in the making.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, I will open it up then to public. Comments? Is there any public comment on this item? I see a hand raised, and then Kent Sawatsky. Julie?
Yes, I just wanted to say, uh, Councilmember Stefani, um, very, very grateful you came, but they just find you to do the due detail. And I always appreciate it, and I appreciate all the way, so thank you, and I appreciate that.
And Kent Sawatsky?
Kent Sawatsky, I strongly supported the project at the planning commission level. I did wish to make notice, and there's a very good, uh, and I really appreciate Elizabeth McKay under any perception leaving the dais and even the room and not participating. Unfortunately, at the planning commission level, we had two- Unfortunately, at the planning commission level, we had two people that declared they had potential conflicts of interest. One said that they, a small sliver of the project was within the distance of their residence. The other one was contiguous to, to the project. Both of those people remained at the dais. If I recall right, both of them actually participated in some communication regarding the project and then only one of the two voted. I think you really need to, to get an understanding, and I think you probably should go to your legal counsel. Again, I'm not throwing a monkey wrench in this thing. I think you can move forward with this. But unfortunately, legal advice was given that due to the need for a quorum, that the person with the least egregious conflict of interest was allowed to vote. I don't believe that's correct. A conflict of interest is a conflict of interest. You only had four people at the dais at that time, and that only left two people who actually legally could have voted on the project. I highly recommend that in the future, you, you have your staff run this by legal counsel before making legal determinations regarding conflict of interest. It's a very good thing. Planning Commission had last Planning Commission meeting in very long detail. Highly recommend you all take the time to watch that and get the, the accessory documents. It goes way beyond what I've ever heard and very accurate by competent Humboldt County Council. Thank you for having me speak.
Were you referring to Humboldt County Planning Commission had a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, if there's no other further public comment, we'll move it back to the pleasure of the council. We need an adoption of, we need to receive the staff report and adopt resolution number one-two-two-nine.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Angela Scholl, seconded by Chris Becker to receive the staff report and adopt resolution number one-two-two-nine. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And one abstention. Thank you, Ann, until I come back in. All right, we are now on item seven. I'll wait a minute here, so, thank you, Gary. Thank you for your work. Um. Wait a minute here for Elizabeth to come in. We are now on item seven, the Greenwood Truck Route Construction Contract Award, and this is an action item. The city has concluded the open bidding process for the Greenwood Road Truck Route Improvement Construction Project. The city received five bids with the lowest responsive bidder determined to be RAO Construction Incorporated. RAO's bid and qualifications were valued by the city engineer and determined to be a qualified bid within the construction budget allocated for the project. The city engineer is recommending that RAO Construction, Inc. be awarded the bid and that the city manager proceed with the execution of the notice of award and subsequent contracting documents. The contracting documents will be reviewed by the city attorney and will be signed by the city manager upon the attorney's review and approval. Construction activities are scheduled to start in June. This project is funded by the California Transportation Department STIP program. The recommended contract award amount is one million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Okay, um. Let's start with questions from council of staff, if there are any questions. Now, what's going on here right now is the laterals that are going in, which you determined, we might as well have them happen since this is going to occur later. So is this, I know it's not the related object, but, object, but is it topic, but is this going to work with the timeline and all with this?
Yes, and actually, the low bidder on, um, on this project is also the contractor was a low bidder on the lateral, so.
So it's the same. Doing the work, okay, good. All right, that was the question I, I was concerned about was how it was all going to work out timewise. Other questions from council before I open it up to public?
I just wanted to note that I, um, I'm really pleased that we have a, we have a local contractor who was awarded the bid. But not only that, that the majority of the listed subcontractors are also local. So, you know, kudos to the process for, for hiring local when we can.
Good point.
Can you tell us who our other four bidders were?
It's on here, Hoover, Mercer, Fraser, Kernan, Sundberg.
Sub, subcontractors.
No.
No.
Subcontractors are the other.
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
There's another.
There's a few different.
Sorry.
Another page.
I saw that one.
It looks like this.
Those are the subcontractors.
The one that you need the magnifying glass for.
Oh, all right, well, then it's not that one.
So, yeah.
That is the stuff, you're right.
The mic, the big one.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
It has all their names across the top.
If you look at the technical memorandum submitted by the engineer, it states, it goes through the review process and states who bids were received from. So it's like the page after the agenda report?
Yeah. RAO Construction Company, Hoover and Company, Mercer Fraser Company, Kernan Construction, and GR Sundberg, Inc.
Thanks.
I can read that. All right, um.
Just interesting to me that very, number one, the, the difference in cost going across the top is that really for that one item?
Well.
It ranges.
For mobilization and demo?
Yes.
Yeah, so mobilization and demobilization is, um, it can sometimes be kind of a catch-all bid item, and that's a lot of, um, a lot of times that's where different costs get buried. So one of the, um, benefits or opportunities that RAO had was that they're already mobilized on the lateral project. And so they were able to give a better price. So mobilization is usually getting all your equipment here, getting all your sub setup, um, getting, you know, your traffic control and everything established if you need to get materials here. So because they were the contractor, um, that's already working here and have their equipment here, they're able to, uh, make some reductions in that, and that's, you know, that's, that's just an item where, um, contractors, you know, bidding's really an art form when it comes to projects like this, and that's why you have bid summaries so that you could go through and make sure that you're comparing apples to apples. And that's really where you start to see, uh, contractors moving, um, monies around and, and potentially burying profits in different light items and things, so.
Can you remind us about the lateral project? So we approved that to a certain amount of money. So does that mean, and that's why we didn't see the, um, we didn't have to approve the award of that contract, is that right? Yes. And can you tell us at what, um, what the price was that RAO came in on that project?
I believe it's around three hundred. It was below the engineer's estimate.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. Can I make a request that, um, when we have things like this in the packet, if we could maybe have that broken up into a couple of pages so we can actually maybe just string them together and read them?
Sure.
Um, because I didn't, I wasn't able to view this on a computer, so I just wasn't able to use it at all.
All right, if there are no more questions or comments from council, we'll open it up for the public. Kent Sawatsky and then Julie?
I do support what council member, uh, Scholl said on this particular thing. It's great to have local people. Found it really interesting. I think two of the, uh, other bidding parties are actual subcontractors for RAO. That's a little bit unusual. And I think there was only one out of Anderson who was an out-of-the-area contractor. Uh, my concern has to do with the management of this particular project by our city engineer. When we seem to not have the same quality of work we had when PG&E was doing the work in our streets, the metal plates, uh, are to a point where people are actually saying, if I drive in the opposite lane, a flow of traffic to avoid those metal plates, they're installed, in my opinion, in an inferior manner. Uh, there are such things as a, one of the sign things out here in the, uh, in the bicycle lane was left there with, with no sign on it. And somebody could possibly not even see that thing run to, for liability. Uh, I also had a major problem as far as over the weekend, uh, all these places who had cones, uh, not necessarily in front of their, were not necessary to have in front of the residents and they had to park somewhere else. Uh, that should not have happened. Uh, so I think you need to really make sure that your city engineer is correctly managing this project in the best interest of the residents, so that, uh, people get in their driveways, they can still park when, when it's applicable. And hopefully this is not a trend that's being set as far as, um, discounting the need of the public to still have access to their property during this construction project. Um, so those are my major comments on this particular one. And, uh, I guess, I guess I would have to say, I think we're going to maybe rebrand Blue Lake as the, uh, the land of speed humps and bulb outs. I think that'll be our new name. We'll get Blue Lake. Thank you for having me speak.
Julie?
Hey, guys. Um, I did have to turn this off too, as it's very hard, my phone. Uh, I couldn't, I'm trying to review it and, um, I don't know why I need what we're doing, but the planning commission, uh, there is some, um, letters in there, dated prior to that. When it's, uh, some of these bids, uh, we were told there that it was done, but it was not in the packet. Planning commission should have looked at this, we should have found other public, uh, to, to, to bring anything out there, to help people do this prior, it was in their packet. So just a warning for, uh, if public information should be out there, um. So this is why we didn't give you bulb out for school or discussion. Um, and I just checked here, I thought we made great, like, a lot of our, uh, summer events around this, um. I did pick a conflict on item twenty-seven, Gary, if you're still online, um, no, that's the way. Then we have been doing the new finance, the desperate thing, and we second their bid for that. It is actually many thousands that we have listed on the other budget sheet as by the point of seven fifty-five dollars. So that was a little bit of a conflict I seen, and I also remember when it had just done the, uh, creeping and stuff like that, like, wow, what a crisis, but, um, but thank you for getting the call blocked and put it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment, Jean?
Uh, first off, I want to say, uh, that I really appreciate the idea of trying to, uh, slow the traffic down on Greenwood. I wasn't really a fan, but, um, it, it seems lately um, that the traffic has actually gotten faster and people are disrespecting the, uh, uh, the construction worker that's going on with the, can't mention people are going down the wrong side of the road to avoid the plates. Uh, I even had a, a truck, there was a, a truck, I, I did call the, uh, the owner on this, uh, speeding down the wrong way during school. Um, it, it is, uh, oh, uh, and within the construction, my biggest concern right now for, uh, my house is that, that when the trucks go by, uh, it is shaking my house. If there's, if there's a load on, on, uh, a truck, uh, it's shaking my house. And I don't know why, um, I know opening it up, um, it's maybe the, the water pipes or such are bouncing, uh, but I would like to have somebody look at that. And if anybody would like to come, this is an open invitation, if anybody would like to come to my house, four twenty Greenwood Road, about seven fifteen in the morning, okay? Yeah, seven fifteen in the morning, I know that's early. Uh, and stand there and watch the kids going to school and the trucks and the, the traffic and people going out of town, people coming into town. Um, if, uh, I'll have the coffee on and just knock on my door and, and we can all watch. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? All right, we'll come back to council for the vote. What we need is to authorize the city manager to execute the construction contract with RAO Construction, Inc. for the Greenwood Road Truck Route Improvement Project and authorize the city manager to authorize and execute additional project changes, change orders as necessary and appropriate within the total construction budget of one million, three hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
I have one more question. Um, so being as that difference between the bid and the full budget is about two hundred thousand dollars, can you give us an idea of what additional items may be rebuilt with that money?
Um, I, we did have some discussion about alternatives, um, originally in the project. Um, we weren't sure how the bids were going to come in. Construction prices are all over the map right now. And actually, Jordan did a pretty good job. She was, I think, about fifty thousand dollars off on her engineer's estimate for this. Um, so there are some additional, um, items that could be added back into the project. Um, we were pretty tight on, um, features and, um, I don't want to say beautification because the project doesn't really fund beautification, but it's possible to do really nicely, um, done, designed and installed features that slow traffic down, but also look really nice in the community. So that could be something that we, um, put a little bit more funding towards, um, aesthetics, um, for some of the features. Um, there's opportunities to, uh, uh, have some nicer landscaping. Um, we've looked at other, uh, safety features that, um, that could be added. Um, there could be additional, um, amenities for, um, what are some of the things we looked at? We looked at different landscaping features, um, benches. Um, there's kind of a host of items, um, but we wanted to get into the contract and see where the numbers fell before we started to add back in items and features. So, but all of it has to stay within the scope and authorization of what the STIP program has funded us for.
Right. Was moving power poles one of those items?
No, we are unable to move power poles, so we tried to do that originally. We worked with PG&E and could not get any authorizations to move power poles. And that's one of the biggest reasons why we have the bulb outs and, um, and the way the project is designed is because we have so many power poles within our sidewalk structure.
Yeah, that was a dream of mine to get that underground, but it was not possible. It's very expensive to do that. Um, any other questions or comments from council? And I will entertain a motion that we authorize the city manager to execute this construction contract.
Make a motion as read.
Second. Motion made by Chris Edgar, seconded by Angela Scholl to authorize the city manager to execute the construction contract with RAO Construction, Inc. for the Greenwood Road Truck Route Improvement Project and authorize the city manager to authorize and execute, execute additional project change orders as necessary and appropriate within the total construction budget of one million, three hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes. Okay, we are now on item eight. And this is a public hearing, consideration of resolution number one-two-two-eight. A resolution approving an application for funding and the execution of a grant agreement and any amendment thereto from the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty funding year of the state CDBG program for accessibility improvements to the library. Um, city staff is requesting authorization to amend our current CDBG library access improvement project by adding additional work and funding to the project. During the recent ADA inspection by the county, it was noted that additional work beyond what was originally designed is required to meet the ADA standards. The additional work is estimated cost approximately thirty thousand dollars and staff is recommending amending the project budget to include additional funds for inspections and project management. The city's program income fund has adequate funds to support the activity and the project meets the requirements and regulations of the program. And then it will be done. I hope.
And I don't know if, I don't know if the state is going to authorize this amendment, but we're trying to get all our ducks in a row in case we can get it, um, through the process.
Well, I know the librarian is looking forward to having her, um, flower box. flower box moved up against the
Yeah, and we've held off on, um, doing the punchless work, um, hoping that we can get this through this amendment through the state, uh, because there's additional concrete work. But if we can't, we're just going to move ahead and do the project as it was designed at the time, at the time the plans were stamped, ADA plans or ADA code had changed. So we're kind of at a crossover. So if we don't get this approved by the state, uh, we may have to go for a second project with, if they won't let us do an amendment. So we're not really sure how that's going to work out. So.
So even though the project was stamped and the codes changed, we have to go by the new codes, not the two codes in which it was stamped.
Right. Well, we can't pass the inspection. So we had a CASP inspector come out and there were a, a couple of items that just, and it's basically just a landing is just off by a small amount. Originally it was fine. So we're trying to work around some items and see if we can, um, see what we can come up with within our project scope. But if we had the additional resources, then we can make the bigger fix. So yeah, it's, I mean, codes change all the time. So one minute you're in compliance and the next code change comes out and then you're out of compliance. And you know, it, you know, there's, there's those grace periods and things like you're always just, you know, chasing, um, those improvements as as you're able to fund projects. So.
All right. Any further questions or comments for staff on this item? Okay, I'll open this up to the public. Is there any public comment on this? Kent Sowatsky and Scott?
Thank you. I recall being at a city council meeting where this project was discussed at some length and it was great community interest in the specific details of the project and the cost of the project. So I think, uh, Councilwoman Shell's, uh, question may have helped clarify what I was wondering, but two very specific questions. One is city manager mega mentioned that the landing was off by a small amount specifically how much additional work of what dimensions is being required to meet the new ADA. I hope you can answer that question before you vote on this. And secondly, how is it that the city's, uh, contractors, planners and engineers were not aware of this as they were proceeding to get the final design prepared? It seems like if you had a design and got it built in a timely fashion, you would have been able to accomplish that project as it was designed and not be out of compliance. So again, the, the cost of this and the dimensions are of interest to this citizen. Thank you.
Kent.
Well, I wish to ask the same questions that Scott did. Maybe you'll get an answer, maybe not. Having done ADA compliance, I'm familiar how close and I watched with great. I don't know, you call it regret when Humboldt County had to jackhammer some of theirs out two or three times. Things were off by a thirty second of an inch or something like that and they had to redo it. They had to grind them. It's amazing what ADA compliance by these inspectors is costing us. But, uh, again, the, the main question is we're supposed to have competent engineers. They're supposed to keep keeping aligned with what their current policy is. It doesn't change without latitude to, to, to move forward with your projects if you move forward in timing. So I think there were errors made actually in it. When I did handicap accessibility, I always made the, the fall a little less than required. I made the landings a little bit bigger than than they were required to, and I never had any problems with this. It's just, um, so as far as exactly what's being done, the, the amount of money being spent, which actually should be being spent to help people redo their, their, uh, their kitchens that are out of compliance, their bathroom, you have to go ahead and do that instead of this, um, which is a great concern again to the public. I feel it's being misappropriated and used in a, in a manner it should not be. So anyway, we're going to see, see whether they allow it to happen. I strongly suggest that public wants to know exactly what the, the flaws were and not just this. Thirty thousand dollars is a lot of money. Uh, we also, we also, maybe just coincidental, but it seems like the, the city hall itself, the office space remodel at the same time. Maybe that's a separate budget issue, but there's a perception out there that possibly that was included in this. Painting was included, a bunch of other things that really weren't ADA compliant related. And I, I personally feel that, uh, this money, uh, may not be properly having been spent. Thank you for your speak.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Julie.
I think we have a privacy to thank you.
Oh, okay. All right, back to council then for, um, more questions or comments or a question in a second.
Well, I'm curious about the dimensions that have to be corrected. Can you share that with us?
I, I don't know. I'm not an engineer, so I don't know the exact dimensions of, um, of the compliance issues. I know they're very minimal. Um, we even had issues with the book drop was off by a quarter, wasn't even a quarter, it was an eighth of an inch, less than an eighth of an inch. Um, and it's an ADA compliant book drop. And it was ordered through an ADA, um, recommended, um, manufacturer. And so it's, it can be as much as, um, you know, depending on who your inspector is, um, originally the entrance to the library was, um, technically a walkway and not a ramp. Some of those, uh, some of those regulations have changed with the new ADA regulations. Um, I think we're getting caught up in some of that, but, um, you'd have to ask the, the engineers for more specifics.
Well, as it's been pointed out this evening that things are expensive and even if you think that it's a lot of money for, um, what we have to do, if there's some tearing up that has to occur or something like that, it sounds like it's, it's going to cost money. And the Community Development Block Grant Pro, uh, Program. We used to give out a lot of money for people to use on their homes and bathrooms and kitchens and whatnot, but we have a income qualifying issue with the program. So I'm glad to see that this was able to be approved under it because their income qualifications are sometimes very, very strict. So having said that, um, I will close the public hearing and I'm looking for a motion in a second.
So we are looking for a motion to move
approve the adoption of resolution number one, two, two, eight and authorize the city manager to execute all required
And reduce the program income fund by thirty five thousand dollars. I move.
Second.
Go ahead.
Okay, motion made by, uh, Angela Shaw, seconded by Elizabeth McKay to approve the adoption of resolution number one, two, two, eight and authorize the city manager to execute all required documentations using the thirty five thousand dollars from our Community Development Block Grant Project Program.
Right.
That's what it's called. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, it passes. Item nine. Contract with the Humboldt, the County of Humboldt and Humboldt County Sheriff for the provision of law enforcement services in the city of Blue Lake. Yay. The County of Humboldt and Humboldt County Sheriff have provided the city with a new contract for the provision of law enforcement services to the city of Blue Lake. The new contract includes a new cost proposal along with a revised methodology for cost calculations. The new contract is a result of the many meetings and discussions held between the county, the sheriff and the city's ad hoc committee and reflects a price structure that is accountable and reflective of actual costs associated with the provision of services in Blue Lake. City staff is recommending that the council accept the terms of the agreement and direct staff to finalize the contract. The staff has provided the contract to the city attorney for a review of substantial changes. If substantial changes are recommended, the city manager will bring the contract back to council for review and consideration. And I just want to thank the ad hoc committee members, Mandy Maker and Elizabeth McKay. I'm not going to thank myself, but anyway, it was, it was very interesting to be involved in that process and it really shows how when people work together we can come to conclusions and we can come to an agreement. So that's, uh, the reflection of what we have here.
Agreed.
Questions or comments from staff? I'm for staff from council.
Yeah. Is there any major changes to our previous, um, contract?
Yeah, so the
No, not funny. I'm just talking about service.
Um, not necessarily service, but it was mostly the methodology for calculating costs. So our prior contract just had listed an amount. Um, there was nothing to back it up. There was nothing for the city to, um, analyze or be able to, um, uh, look at for future increases. It was just kind of a base amount. So the biggest part of this is, um, that cost methodology that I think is really critical. Um, it was something that we had asked for when we received the first proposal from the sheriff um, for the over three hundred and some thousand dollars that they were proposing. So I think this puts us in a better position to at least analyze costs for the future. If there's cost increases or decreases, they should be captured, um, through this process. Um, and then there's also updated like contracting language about how issues are resolved, um, timeframes for presenting cost proposals, um, so that we have adequate time to be able to analyze, plan for our budgets. So it's, I think it's a much, um, it's a much better contract. It gives everyone a better playing field. And like I said, it makes those costs more accountable versus just having, you know, a, a dollar amount that doesn't have anything behind it for us to be able to analyze.
So, so does that mean is, is what you're saying is, is that then the, the sheriff's office will be able to capture data that then is provided to the city so that we can compare data from a year to year basis? You know, like we should be doing?
Right. So through, and just through the process, I mean, we, I really appreciated, um, Regina Fuller and Brian Cornell, uh, meeting with the ad hoc group. Uh, we went through, um, you know, because there was a lot of, I, this was a really hard process. Um, it was a very stressful process. It was a very adversarial process. And I think, you know, working with Regina and, and Brian to be able to really look at numbers and see where those numbers were coming from, um, it allowed us to get a better understanding too of how those costs are allocated. Um, and I think the ad hoc did a good job in, um, really analyzing those numbers and having a good feel and understanding of where those numbers were coming from, because we did, we were able to catch, um, some pretty substantial costs that, uh, should, that were removed over six million dollars in costs that we were able to have removed from that process because they were, um, we didn't feel that they were, uh, properly applied to the process. And, uh, after review, the sheriff's department agreed. So it allowed us to really like digest the numbers. And I think that's really important because of the way this process rolled out. I think it was really important to have numbers that had something behind them, um, and, and something that we can also look at in future. Cause I mean, there could be times where costs can decrease. Um, the sheriff's office could also get grants for certain items. And so there could be decreases there. Um, so this allows all of that to be applied through a structure that can be analyzed.
And in kind of a related issue, um, some of us went to the Measure Z Committee meeting and, um, we had an application for thirty five thousand dollars to, um, help us with this. And what happened there, and we actually decreased our amount to ask for thirty thousand. Well, what happened ultimately when we went back to see where Measure Z money went, a lot of the Measure Z money, you know, it was totally, I think it was about four million dollars, but some people wanted a million dollars here, a million dollars there. It went very, very quickly. So the people that wanted just like us, thirty thousand dollars, there was nothing left. It was really disappointing. Um, but it did show that that Measure Z money and that whole process needs to be looked at. And a lot of people mentioned that at the Measure Z Committee meeting and also at the, at the board supervisors meeting. So something may change there. But anyway, we did, we did try to get some money to help with that from that measure. Is there any other questions or comments from council before I open it up to public? All right. Um, I will open this up for public comment. Kent Sowatsky.
And Mandy probably already mentioned, but I did have a little communication with the sheriff. He's optimistic that, uh, funding, uh, funding, but staff may come up to a level where we will be sharing a deputy specified for both Trinidad and Blue Lake. Uh, Spock spoke with Eli over in, uh, in Trinidad, who is the city manager there and he confirmed the Measure Z process was a little bit embarrassing and it hasn't been brought to light yet. But the worst lie is a lie by omission. And when you made this application for thirty five thousand dollars, it wasn't mentioned that you basically at that, if it had been awarded that would not only have been fully funded our law enforcement, but you would have seven thousand dollars extra put in your general fund. It was reduced to thirty thousand. That was only two thousand extra. I highly recommend that you, uh, give these, uh, Measure Z people full information when this definitely be done in the future. They will be looking twice the math you guys use when you make a request. Uh, having participated in this, uh, I think the main person there with Ginger, I've known Ginger, she was the chair, she spoke. And just about all these people and I have been, been on this topic regarding Measures E for whatever timeframe since it first came on, I attended the first meeting and still attend the meetings. And, uh, your, your request was, uh, quite far down the list. Sometimes once in a while they have an extra thirty thousand dollars to put out for somebody at the last minute. It's not done yet. It's not done yet. It hasn't been finalized, but I think with the additional information they will be receiving on that. I think they will be a little disillusioned with the honesty of the lake when they make requests. They come up to you.
There's two people on Zoom, Kat and Erica and Julie. So let's do Kat and Erica first.
Hi, this is Erica House. Um, I just, can you hear me?
Yes, very clear.
Okay, thank you. So thank you again for, um, working with the sheriff again to try to get a lot of the points clarified and get a very clear, uh, contract. I do notice that there is, uh, no mention of animal control in this particular contract. Is that a separate contract or is that, are we not getting any animal control services?
Animals are, it's separate. It's separate. We're being told that it's separate. Continue with your comment.
Separate. Yeah.
Okay. And was, are we going to be, um, doing a separate contract then for animal control services?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Julie.
I would love to thank you guys for clarifying that. Tyler, people, people very, very, very appropriate. Thank you. Um, I think the main thing that everything is prioritized in public safety or infrastructure. So I would like to, uh, sample for, um, listening to the public and the national people about this, you know, um, liberation, maybe some dialogue that everybody thought was maybe not constructive, but here we are, we probably stand with them for. So I would really need to think about this in the future of the posture, maybe we'll do one to go up. And the reason why it's maybe if I'm going to go up. So I left a vibe from this in there more than twenty four by nine. Even if we could do some, like, maybe go physical, but seeing that if you can hear in town and like that we can, uh, generate these funds, the grant and all this other stuff and those things would be all there too. This town has been a huge step up there. Um, we know a lot. So that's what we took saying of the internal community to prepare the new standard plan. It's very likely and would make me better time to be around right now. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, back to council for
Can we get a tiny, just on that animal control issue, that's, um, the same, there is no animal control contract other than what we've currently had in place. Is that correct?
Right. We have a contract for animal control services with the sheriff.
Right. But it's the same as it always been. Right, but it's the same as it always been. Okay.
Okay, so the recommended action is that, that we direct staff to finalize the contract for law enforcement services with the county of Humboldt and the Humboldt County Sheriff and authorize the mayor and the city manager to sign the final contract documents.
Assuming that the city attorney doesn't find anything wonky in there.
Right.
You'd like to add that to your
Well, that was in, that was in the, that was, that was in the, um, general. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was in there.
Okay.
But yeah, I would make that motion.
You want it to be added to your motion?
Yes.
Pending, uh, attorney approval.
Yes.
Something like that. Okay. All right, is the
Oh, seconded.
Clear. Okay, motion made by, um, Angela Shaw, seconded by Elizabeth McKay to direct staff to finalize the contract for law enforcement services with the county of Humboldt and the Humboldt County Sheriff. Authorize the mayor and the city manager to sign the final contract documents pending approval by the attorney. Any further discussion from council? Follows in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes. Okay, we have a contract. Alright. Page two. Okay, item ten, discussion regarding retail cannabis operations in the city of Blue Lake and potential changes to the city's cannabis ordinance, discussion and direction. And we do have a public comment on this item from Andrew Jones. Which I guess I could read now, or I could wait till we open up to public comment.
Yeah, go ahead. So, I mean, wait, you wanna wait? Uh, can I share something that I, I corresponded with the city manager in Riedel.
Okay.
Regarding, um, the tax revenues that they get. And, um, in twenty twenty one, twenty two, for the dispensaries only, and they have two dispensaries and evidently one is doing well and one is not doing well. But they, uh, received in twenty one, twenty two, fifty nine thousand, nine hundred sixty one dollars and forty nine cents in tax revenue. And then in twenty twenty two, twenty three, it was lower. It was fifty four thousand, eight hundred forty seven and eleven cents. And then in twenty twenty three, twenty four, it was forty three thousand eight hundred seventy six and thirty six cents. They also have, which you, uh, visited, I didn't visit. I had to leave that.
Yeah, I was gonna report on that with, during the report, but yeah.
Yeah.
It's related to this too. Yeah, they have a
Well, they have, they made a lot more off of the other, the growing part, but that's not what we were asking for. We're only asking for the dispensary part. So, that sounds like we might have some. Do you wanna explain a little more what you mean by the growing part?
Growing marijuana.
We would. Cultivation. What I mean, but the business factor and how you're saying they made more.
Well, the business in Riedel is a huge, you know, I don't know how to describe it. It's like this whole parking lot, two levels of marijuana grow, indoor grow. It's called Northwest Flower Company, I think is the name of it. And we took a tour of it along with the League of Cities because Riedel hosted the League of Cities meetings on Friday, May third. I was gonna report on this, but anyway, Elizabeth had to leave early, but I stayed and went during, to the tour. And it's a huge operation and the man is doing so well that's doing this, that he has the footings already ready for two two or three more of these same buildings. It's in their kind of a, like their business park would be similar to what we have in our what we have as our district. Um, so that is a huge operation. I mean, it's he was throwing around figures like his PG&E bill is forty thousand dollars a month, you know, just really incredible amounts of money going through. But that is not really something that we necessarily wanna get into. I mean, I, I think what we're talking about is just a dispensary. And Riedel's about twice the size of us. I think they're like thirty four hundred
Yeah.
people. And they have two dispensaries, one you said wasn't doing well. So I mean, it's, it's a, it's pretty even to figure out from what they're experiencing, how it might ha- happen here.
Well, the thing with cultivation too is the way the laws are worked out with that, that it, all the taxes, pretty much all the overhead is taxes. Like the, the growers don't, unless you're doing like that, what that guy has, which is massive amounts of growing. It, they, it's not feasible for someone to make a company that's small and groups, make a small, a small company and grow cannabis. It has to be massive to do.
Yeah, and he figures that all out.
The taxes are insane.
Yeah.
And then you have to go through a licensed broker to even get it into the dispensary.
Right. I mean, he had all the figures. I guess he had been in, in jail, in prison, and he figured this all out while he was there. He read about it. When he came out, he decided to get into this business. Um, I mean, even when he was hiring people to trim, he found out that it was cheaper for him to buy an eighty five thousand dollar trimming machine rather than than pay for trim migrants as they're kind of known people to come in and, and trim. Um, so you're right. It was, it was huge and small farmers, for instance, they're having trouble in Garberville and that kind of thing because of, um, the taxes. But for him, it's a clearly different thing. But anyway, that, that's one way to go, which I don't think is the direction that we necessarily want to. The fact of the dispensary idea.
Right. I just wanted to share that information of, because someone was asking, well, what kind of tax revenue is there? So this is what they have received. So, you know, we are half the size, so, and who knows?
Yeah.
There's no guarantees for anything. When you, you said you met with the city planner? Manager?
City manager.
City manager. Was there any indication of, um, an increase in those three years, an increase in arrests for drug related issues? I, I emailed him back. I haven't heard back.
Okay.
Okay. So I, I, that is a question I asked.
Yeah.
I have heard back. Yeah. I did just a little bit of work today trying to figure out where we might land in that direction. But I haven't, uh, I know that the, that the sales have gone down in the last three years. Um, I looked at some figures for twenty twenty three uh, for Okada and for, um, Eureka. And they, um, Okada had, um, seven point four million in gross cannabis sales. And Eureka had ten point seven million. But the, uh, I'm hoping to find some, some tax revenue numbers, because I'd be curious. I'll, I'd look up, I'll look up, uh, Riedel and see what that rate breaks down to. Because that's, that's a missing piece of the puzzle.
And Mandy, you were looking at an ordinance that, uh, the city of weed ironically um, has in their, in their city. I don't know enough about how large weed is. Is it, is it about the same size as Blue Lake?
No, it's bigger.
It's bigger. Okay.
Not by much.
But you had some, um, templates of how they came up with an ordinance?
Uh, I think at the last meeting you guys were provided with their ordinance. Um, and our city attorney had extended, we decided it's kind of a a starting block to, uh, kind of look at how, uh, they handled their retail, um, operations, the limitations on the number of licenses. Uh, I've been a little bit more interested in just the enforcement side and the kind of oversight side and, and what kind of costs would be associated, um, with that uh, for the city. I know with cultivation, there's a lot of uh, oversight that the citizens are required to participate in. There's the track and trace programs and there's a lot of upfront costs associated with that. So that's kind of one of my concerns is just, um, you know, that kind of cost benefit. Is it is it a, a financial or time burden on the city to manage something like this or smaller retail establishments, um, are less, um, burdensome in that manner. So that's kind of some of the the information that I've been trying to gather. And I have to say honestly, I haven't spent uh, an extreme amount of time on this, but I will be reaching out, um, to some of our our smaller, uh, partner cities to kind of see how that's affected them and their budgets and their operations. Um, because I know when all this first started, um, there was a huge investment that the cities had to make, a financial investment, staffing investment, um, just to implement the regulatory framework.
What's Trinidad's policy, do you know?
I don't, I, I don't believe they allow it. But, oh, sorry.
Um, I'm not sure. I, I feel like they don't allow retail cannabis, but I'm, I'm not for sure.
Yeah, I haven't seen any there.
No, I mean, it's kind of a, you know, there's, the cities in California, I think it was like fifty four percent of cities don't allow any type of, um, cultivation retail. So I mean, we're not an anomaly by any means. Um, but, you know, I think looking at, I think the biggest thing is looking at what the impacts are and then looking at the structure that you can put in place to limit the number of licenses. And I think, oh, that's pretty straightforward. And there's a lot of cities that, you know, that do that.
Yeah, I, I would like to see that if we go forward with this. But I mean, if, if they're getting fifty nine thousand, well, even on a bad year, forty three thousand a year in taxes, does that go to the cities? So that could offset the cost of whatever, um, overhead we might, we might have implementing this.
Have you found any overhead, like just for the retail stops that's gonna be burdensome on your, for your guys' side?
No, I mean, like I said, I haven't really delved into it too much. Um, there's still a lot of layers. There's a lot of, um, licensing layers, state licensing requirements there, you know, so I'm, I haven't really got too deep into it. So I wanted to kind of see what direction you guys were going tonight. I feel like we're kind of at a point where if you want to direct staff to really look at this and give us maybe some parameters to work within, I think that you're kind of at that point. Um, it seems like your discussions have really revolved around a very limited number of small retail, you know, opportunities, limiting that by limiting the number of licenses, looking at zoning. Um, that's another opportunity to regulate um, and control through your zoning. Um, so I'm looking more to you guys tonight for some guidance on what the next step is. This is the second time you've had it before you. I know it's not, you know, um, a super high priority item, but if you want staff to really start focusing, um, then I need to have that direction, because we will need to have some legal counsel on this as well. And I think that's probably pretty minimal. I mean, there's so many cities now that have this framework in place, you know, that, that we could work from, but.
Um, there's like, I wanna know like how far away from the school should be.
Oh, yeah, that's
Oh, that's
I think that's already regulated.
Okay, that's regulated. Okay.
And playgrounds and that kind of thing?
Right.
Okay. I mean, we're a small city, so it's a few hundred yards, it might be limiting us. Yeah, you can only be in this small section. Um, alright, if there are more questions, I'm gonna
I just, I would like to share that I talked to a, I talked to somebody who's owns two, um, dispensaries today. And they just shared some of the ups and downs and, and whatnot with me. And I asked them if they thought that Blue Lake, you know, was a viable location for a dispensary and they, they thought it might be. Um, they had a lot of information to share with me and I think that, um, if we wanna move forward, we might have a working session and invite, um, one or two business owners to come and chat with us about some of these things. Because of, you know, that's a huge piece of it. I mean, we can do a lot of work and spend a lot of money to make it possible, but if we don't have a business owner that wants to be here, that can make a, you know, that can keep the store open, then all that work might have been for nothing. Um, we have a lot of competition surrounding us, um, Arcata, Eureka, McKinleyville, um, and even over in Glendale, I, I believe. So, you know, that's, that's maybe one piece we don't wanna look at.
Yeah, well, I mean, just the fact that we're going to have something like this pass doesn't necessarily mean that someone's going to start a business here. You know, then it's on the onus of the business owner to decide whether they wanna take a chance.
It's not an unburdened cost to pass this and to make it a resolution.
Well, I'm just saying, if we're gonna go to all the trouble to get that far, we might wanna consider the feasibility of the business um, before we spend more, more money and time here in Blue Lake, getting to the point where we pass a resolution to allow it.
Well, I mean, when we first passed this, um, idea of not having any retail or, um, growing or manufacturing, we did allow for people to have their own private gardens, um, indoor gardens. And there was a hundred and fifty dollar, uh, fee to have our building inspector come out and look at your indoor garden. And to my knowledge, no one's taken out that one hundred and fifty dollar fee to have a small garden. Um, I have a greenhouse, I could do it, but I don't necessarily want
Be a locking greenhouse.
Oh.
Okay, I, I, I I asked for the greenhouse because it's a huge carbon footprint, is a huge carbon footprint. Yeah.
Okay, um,
I wonder if someone would be willing to come talk to the council. If someone would be willing to, um, at least like, you know, have that honest conversation about, you know, here's what, here's what the startup costs were like, you know? Um, here are some of the concerns that we have in doing business. Here are some of the benefits of doing business. I don't know if there is a person out there who would be willing to do that.
Like a government person from another city? No, I think she's talking about a business owner.
Business owner.
Business owner coming, like a guest speaker.
Yeah.
Essentially. I mean, I was wondering if the Economic Development Commission would like to look at this.
I think they could definitely take this on.
First, take a look at it. And do, yeah, no, do some legwork on it and then bring it back. Because I know when we did our survey, and this has been, you know, years ago now, there was, it was pretty evenly half and half as far as dispensaries go. Clearly, we didn't want the manufacturing and that kind of thing, but we did have a, um, pretty even amount of people. And that could change if we did another little survey, I suppose. Um, are there any other questions or comments? We can continue.
I have a comment. Uh, it hasn't been read yet, but I agree with Andy's comment.
Well, I was gonna read Andy's comment as soon as we get into public comment. Well, why don't I go ahead and start the public comment now? And I will start by reading a letter we got from Andrew Jones. Um, thanks for having the retail cannabis discussion on the agenda. I'd like to voice my support for allowing cannabis retail within Blue Lake. Nationally, attitudes are changing quickly about cannabis, as seen in recent news such as this article indicating there is now more regular use of cannabis than alcohol. And he has a, um, an email site you can look up. I discourage the council from thinking cannabis retail is capable of carrying more than the standard business tax and regulation liability. Retail is hard. There are already undue burdens placed upon cannabis businesses by the county and state, and the market is already saturated with options. That said, allowing retail within city limits is an appropriate step to capture some revenue from residents and visiting users. Thanks, Andy Jones. So that came in. And with that, I will also open up the public hearing to Public and Laura Rain Ponti.
Yeah, it's, well, Lori, as you know. So I, I would like the council to watch this, um, Zoom presentation that you've just done. Um, I don't see the value in having cannabis sales. I worry, um, about the fact that we don't allow smoking in any establishment in the state of California. So the, the discussion about having a cafe where people can come and, and smoke and enjoy and invite is, is very confusing to me. Um, I realize that we are lacking any kind of retail. But I, that cannabis is a luxury. I know that this discussion was brought to council by a council member who said that she has spoken to people who have to leave late to go to Arcata to buy their cannabis. So and, I mean, yeah, we like to do most cool thing. Um, and so I, I just would like this to be a further discussion. It's gonna something that is, um, taken seriously at this point in time. Um, I realize that the council is desperate for revenue and I don't really have any answer. Um, I think all the things that I'm well, difficult to figure out. And I think that there has been effort you know, to do grocery or any kind of crackable use for people to not have to leave Blue Lake. Um, to, you know, get their bread and milk and whatever, it can be included, but um, I just, and this is just like, I think um, I just, and this is just like, I think you were wise not to talk, to talk about this and and elect to do this early on. And I think that you guys need to pump the brakes for um, this further discussion because we have a beautiful school, we have a beautiful park, we want people to come and enjoy and celebrate the water and the area that we have. And we can, it needs to be part of it because it's accessible everywhere else and people in life, you know, in a country you're in, you can even to whatever. But I think that the city of Blue Lake, maybe we should be an exception and not have a um, retail source. Um, you know, I'm older, I know the noise, it's not been something I've been interested in. And I think it's everywhere else. And maybe we need to be the exception, be a beautiful place where people can come, enjoy the river and, you know, enjoy the sun and all the events that we offer and not need to um, take that direction. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Kent Sowatsky and then Erin.
Yeah, I'd love to say that I'm in one hundred percent agreement with Lori.
Okay, you need to be on the microphone if you want to hear it.
I am Erin McClure, and I would like to say that I'm in one hundred percent agreement with the previous speaker. But I do not believe that Blue Lake needs to get into the drug business. Thank you.
Well, I highly recommend you don't waste any of your staff time on this. We have plenty of other things to do. For those of you who've been tracking this extensively and uh, uh, we're soon gonna be a, a Schedule III drug. It no longer will be what it is. Uh, you'll be able to get it from CVS Pharmacy, you'll be able to get it through Walmart, and there's no way that dispensaries will even be able to compete. Your person down in Real Del will be out of business probably within two or three years at the very most. Uh, because as soon as they open the borders, uh, superior product to what he's growing can be grown. And uh, multiple other countries for probably thirty dollars a pound versus what he has to get there. It's probably seven fifty minimum to even, even so. Uh, we do not have the demographics here to support this. We can't support any other business that you're gonna, I can't understand why any shop person would even consider coming out here for the same reason that you can't get anybody else out here. Twelve hundred people, uh, were not on a main thoroughfare like, it's not like Eureka where the dispensaries are closing on a regular basis, going right to the middle of town. It's not like Real Del, one of the first dispensary areas you come to other than down by Bimbo when you come into Humboldt County, you're gonna catch a few there like Garberville and a few places. But they have a location there and traffic. And so, uh, your, my opinion, turned pretty well wasting your time on staff time and uh, I highly recommend it unless you can actually get somebody to come in here and, and promote and say they would wanna do it that at that time, then you might be interested in putting a little staff time in. Otherwise, we have plenty of other things for staff to do. They may not tune to speak.
Julie.
Yeah, thank you guys. Good for you. I'd like to prefer when, like, February Lawrence, you know, conversation. Uh, this was originally picked up eight years ago, just to put a little high stamp on it. It actually was his first year kind of coming in here. And uh, there are some things that we can manage that um, are available on the city webpage where this conversation with originally kind of is hard. Yeah, and they've, uh, loved to contribute them now. Um, I think they learned a lot to kind of what we're talking on uh, with the fact that you know, so probably those periods like eight years ago, still believe in it about it, you know, um, idealized what it could be essentially. Yeah, we have other things that are on clear and that we're told that we may not, we have to follow through. And so I think I'm kind of a little contradictory, but um, our district manager explained, if city staff were recommending to Blue Lake develop a strict measure. Also being a scalable and steady community atmosphere and technology and just related business. So that bylaws again, back in our two thousand sixteen minutes, there's only three foot plan, she had a higher gear that you need to find. But again, back to the fact that we felt a lot of other projects that actually are a lot shorter than that. And we have not a lot of this much dialogue, you know, so we appreciate any information that, thank you.
Becky.
I actually want to pray Lori and Billy and Kent there. Um, I don't think, we're too small for something like this to even be considered. And after being a um, business owner and a retail business in this town twenty-four years, it costs thousands of dollars a year to be able to bring people here and have a smart business plan, nothing's gonna happen. And fortunately, we did. Thank God we've closed our businesses because, you know, time, that's time. But it's not the retail. Blue Lake is not for retail, none of it.
Any other comments? Okay, back to council for some direction. How's the Economic Development Commission doing in terms of their agenda? Seems like the last one I went to, it was very full, but.
I think that they, uh, I think the EDC is a great place for this to land. Uh, it's an easier, um, it's an easier lift. Um, they're, they're always really um, good about doing outreach. Um, a lot of them have really good contacts and um, I think they really enjoy, you know, looking into projects and, and getting information. So I think if you wanna kick this to the EDC and ask them to do some additional research and um, I think that's a, a a great opportunity. And that's what those commissions are for.
That's what I'm thinking too.
The legwork on a lot of these issues so that by the time it comes back to council, um, you know, they're making a recommendation. It's a recommendation that's been vetted through the commission and through staff. Um, and so you're getting as, you know, the best information as possible.
Yeah, why don't you have that on their June eleventh uh, ECD meeting at four thirty?
How do you mean it's being vetted through the commission and through staff? Does that mean that you're gonna be doing some work as well?
Yeah, I mean, staff always works with the commission, so, um, but I, I personally think of um, the commissions as um, an arm of staff. I mean, we, we use commissions a lot. They're there because they have an area of expertise, um, or they have an area of interest. So um, it's a, it's a great way for us with limited staff members to be able to increase our capacity to do additional research and outreach and, and footwork. So um, so definitely staff would work with EDC, but they can take on a lot of the lifting um, for issues like this.
Yeah, I mean, they may decide to do their own little survey of their own or something. You know, I'd just like to see. It, it seems like it has to do with economic development. So I think, I think that would be a good place to start and then we can move on from there. They have a recommendation for us.
Sounds good.
Um, okay, I think that's pretty clear. Any further comment on that? So that's direction to staff on that. Um, we're on item eleven, council correspondence. And let's see, we had some correspondents that came in this evening and we had something in our packet as well. Um, let's see, from Kent Sowatsky, there was uh, something concerning employment of Blue Lake City Council members. Please forward this communication to the Blue Lake City Council members and appropriate staff as required in your City of Blue Lake City Council roles and responsibilities. Protocol manual page twenty, which states accessed information. The sharing of information with the city council is one of the city manager's highest priorities. The same document on page twenty-six states anti revolving door policy. For a period of one year after leaving office, state law prohibits council members from accepting employment with the city. A fair legal argument can be made that it is more egregious to obtain employment while a council member. A city council person is one of the bosses of the city manager. The city manager is the boss of the city employees. Common sense would dictate that this is not a relationship that could be void from undue influence. The same document on page ten states in no manner, either directly or indirectly, shall a council member become involved in or attempt to influence personnel matters that are under the direction of the city manager. No member of the council shall be by suggestion or otherwise attempt to influence or coerce the city manager concerning appointments to city office or employment. Again, a fair legal argument can be made that this is a quid pro quo arrangement. It is public perception that it would be financially difficult for an employee to not support the suggestions of their boss regarding all city business before the council. To make application for a City of Blue Lake job is without a doubt a violation of the requirements contained in this document. Again, a fair legal argument can be made that only one of the two following options would eliminate the perception of a financial conflict of interest. One, council member Chris Edgar would resign his position with the Blue Lake Department of Public Works. Two, council member Chris Edgar would resign his position on the Blue Lake City Council. I would suggest because of the perceived conflict of interest, council member Chris Edgar do one of the above and cease to participate until the four remaining Blue Lake council members can meet in closed session to confer with the city's legal counsel. Please acknowledge receipt of this communication, read it into the record of the next Blue Lake City Council meeting as communication to the council. And then the other one is from the Ponties. Um, and it starts, it's kind of a little bit backwards the way it goes, but it starts with one, after not being able to physically attend last night's city council meeting and attempting, okay, so this is from the Ponties, after.
Is it numbered here, one?
Right, one is what I'm reading.
Yours?
Yeah.
That's nice.
Well, it starts hello all. After not being able to physically attend, okay, this is from the Ponties.
Two ones, okay.
Last night's city council meeting and attempting to participate via the Zoom link, I felt it was important to send a note of concern. While I try to attend meetings in person as much as possible, I appreciate the option to attend virtually through Zoom. The audio from council members to those in the room amongst themselves and to video participants was inaudible. Barbled and when this was brought to the attention of council, not much effort was made to fix the problem that many were complaining about. One person cited the Brown Act, so I thought I should look into it myself. I have attached a copy for you to look at in particular under one, basic provisions, section E. The last line clearly reads, it requires the public hear all council deliberations, which would include all items on the agenda and discussions. I believe everyone who wants to participate in city government using all the tools available should have that opportunity. It appears the Brown Act also supports this. I ask that before the next meeting, an effort is made by the council or city staff to ensure all meetings meet the requirements for teleconferencing under the Brown Act. Thank you, Lori Ponti. And then I responded. Hi, Dave and Lori, thank you for your email. It's been over a year that the governor of California has ended the mandate for Zoom meetings. Many entities have discontinued this service. Between recording our meetings and providing Zoom accessibility, it's been very challenging for our staff to ensure all technology will be perfect. We do everything we can to make this happen, but glitches do occur and they do not indicate any lack of transparency on the council's behalf. We have a disclaimer on our agenda that quote, live meeting logistics will be prioritized. The quality of the Zoom teleconferences, teleconference meeting cannot be guaranteed. Technical challenges experienced by either the participant or the city will not interrupt or halt the progress of the meeting, unquote. This disclaimer has been reviewed by our attorney and deemed appropriate. Again, thanks for your email sincerely, Blue Lake Mayor Adeline Jones. Now, then they sent three, which is Adeline, thank you for your prompt response. I understand that Governor Newsom agreed California Assembly Bill AB two four four nine in twenty twenty-two, which imposes four periods of differing rules on remote access to public meeting under the Brown Act. I am sure more changes will come when this bill sunsets or changes January first, twenty twenty-six. While AB two four four nine explains most of the changes in regard to the legislative body, I am assuming council and staff members in this circumstance attendance. My point of concern is the difficulty the public has in remotely hearing the legislative body, staff and public in attendance of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, AB two four four nine, section four nine, or five four nine, five four point three, it does require the legislative body to provide a way for the public to quote remotely hear, visually observe and remotely address the legislative body in real time, unquote. I realize the limited response is resources of staff and appreciate everyone. I can, I also do not want the progress of meetings interrupted or halted. They are long enough anyway, but I believe this is an important problem to fix. The city council and staff have been aware of the issues with the inadequate quality of the Zoom feed for at least the last two council, city council meetings. The disclosure.
Disclaimer.
Sorry, disclaimer on the agenda should not give the legislative body, council and staff the ability to ignore the current problem, particularly if it is an equipment issue. I would hope to hear from council's attorney for better clarification. I would also like to know what fund, if any, is in the works to support council and commission meeting recordings by Justin Code. I was not able to clar- clearly hear that discussion at Tuesday night's meeting. Thanks again, Lori Ponti. And then she attaches the uh, Brown Act.
There's Ryan's.
I would like to make note that what she marked in here for us to read.
Uh huh.
It only is for when one of us is not here and telecommuting from some other location.
Which is what Ryan's response was.
Right, so, yeah, and you're right. I, okay, so then Mr. Plots, who I, I CC'd all this to him. And he wrote, thank you for your response and time. As AB two four four nine explains the rule regarding council member use of remote participants for just cause and emergency circumstances, it doesn't make clear that this ruling applies to offering public access only when a council member is attending remotely. The city members and staff are aware of the Zoom link issues and I am hopeful they will work to make meetings going forward, fully accessible to the public, as explained in AB two four four seven. It does make it clear that the public needs to have the ability to hear, see and address the legislative body in real time. There is also reference when a broadcast is disrupted. Does the disclaimer on the agenda discount the language in the ruling? Meetings last such a long time. Hold on a minute.
You're, you're crossing over two different ones there.
That's hers. Meetings last such a long time that any disruption is highly undesirable, as I am sure everyone would agree. Thank you again, Lori. Well, then where is?
The bottom of this.
Oh, okay. These are, okay, these are not in order. Okay, um, the attorney writes, Ms. Ponty, thank you for raising your concern regarding the quality of the audio. As for AB two four four nine, this legislation does not obligate the city to provide a remote platform for the public to attend. Instead, AB two four four nine provides a method by which members of the city council may attend remotely for either just cause or emergency circumstances. AB two four four nine does require a two-way platform for the public to participate remotely. Only when a council member is attending remotely under AB two four four nine. Did I just read this?
Yeah.
Here, God.
I'm gonna go, okay.
It's in both emails.
Yeah, all right, well, I think I've done a double reading, um.
Well, the bottom sentence is the big one.
Oh. Absent this circumstance, there is no obligation to allow the public to attend remotely. The city does offer this as a courtesy for those that may not be able to attend in person. However, attending in person remains the best option as we cannot control the quality or availability of remote options. That is the reason for the disclaimer on the agenda. Thank you, Ryan T. Plots. Thank you. Um, yeah, and there's even some rules. If you're a city council person and you can't show up at a meeting and you, and there's other people in your household at the time that you're zooming in, you have to have them all swear an oath.
You have to put like, I read, like, if you're at a hotel, you have to put the, like, the sign on the door and have your door unlocked for people to come in and join the meeting if they want to. Like, so, like, say if you went on vacation and wanted to join a meeting, you'd have to do that.
Yeah. Well, there are a lot of entities that don't have Zoom anymore. And I'm not gonna say that we're going to do that, but it should be a priority to have meetings run smoothly. And if it can't be running smoothly, I don't wanna spend time on, you know, technology. We spent about forty-five minutes all total that last meeting trying to work out the technicalities. You know, that, that made a nine o'clock meeting go to nine forty-five. Um, you have a handle. Uh, yeah, Lori Ponti.
So I have to appreciate the fact you offered
at your meeting in person and I decided to come back home to see if I could attend it on Zoom and I have it. And so I think whoever worked this out to make this happen, I think this is a great service for everyone and anyone who needs and wants to attend via Zoom. Um, I don't appreciate the fact that you read that last bit of my correspondence with your city attorney's backwards because I think it confused me too and I appreciate having really on their foot. Um, I would like to make clear now, yes, that, that face always referred is obvious on Zoom soon. And um, I would like to make clear that the Brown Act, which I didn't truly feel a lot of you three heard things to or need to know, which I believe I've gotten a little, a lot more information about. Isn't flexible, is pretty standard and it's something that we city followed when you are in a public meeting, a public venue. And I think when you read the attachments that I sent with you and gave you view, they are also trying to come up to the standard of using technology, which is Zoom um, to allow access to public meetings. And so um, I, I appreciate the fact that today's meeting was very audible and clear and available to anybody that attended on Zoom and that was my purpose of coming to you, giving you what I had. And I appreciate the fact that you included it and should be, it should be attached to the correspondence because it was part of the whole conversation. Um, but I, there isn't, it doesn't get to define how it is Zoomed. Um, it is covered in the Brown Act. It needs to be followed. Now, techniques that won't follow this people work and voting consent and now can begin that information that I can. Um, so I'm not trying to be antagonistic. Um, I just want to make sure that everybody who needs using, wants to use Zoom has access to it. And I appreciate that this meeting was very audible and I would hope that all of the council members, the people involved, read what I had to do, not just the Zoom, you know, because we all have the ability to learn more. And I appreciate um, the fact that, that I have this opportunity to speak to you. Um, I don't feel like to have a conversation with your attorney through email was complete. Um, because I didn't get a final response. Um, so hopefully if there's any discussion, any clarification that needs to be made on my part or on council's part, that is done with what's in the attorney. Um, if it impacts what we all do, so thank you.
Kat and Erica? And then Julie?
Hi, this is Erica Dyckes. I just wanted to request that um, so there would be a bit of what you read, Mayor Jones, was not included in the, either the um, agenda or in the packet for tonight's meeting. And I want to request that the um, agenda and the packet be amended to include all that you did read so that we can have an opportunity to um, review those documents and to their completeness.
Julie?
Yeah, guys. Um, hey, thank you for calling out on this um, correspondence today. I did recognize that we um, here for today, Danny, I said everyone that's been moving in, I do, so it's good condition now. Um, Kent's uh, agenda items, we reflected uh, the other item. Lori, thank you. And thank you guys for going out and stuff. So I'm, I'm calling you guys out right now. I know exactly what happened when you got to Zoom, because what you just told us all by just saying. And I'm not going to be spoken on, but I do know that has the ability to do a lot when I hold it. And it was recorded multiple times. And miraculously, I definitely got down, um, this was fixed. And now we have a problem that was made in our parent, um, we have a lawsuit. We have all the times that you would keep elevated, et cetera. We would burn five pound wood to help them, which was a cold, oh, what did I tell you, you pulled the wood. So I might be a little like today, but if you don't have the good lighting, so that I can know what's really put up on the thing, right? When I didn't have the correct, um, without the one. Um, we have actually downgraded when I presented it in real. When we were originally in June, yeah, um, you know, my manager, no, no, no. We were sharing, and you have the ability, and I don't have the people in real and screen share. And I would not accept that other municipalities do not facilitate that. The whole statement and helpful access will assure my state law rights. So thank you. Please continue to do that again.
Okay, um, this item was council correspondence and there was one other correspondence from Kent Sowatsky. To Anna Lee, I appreciate you providing two point zero four point zero two zero agenda preparation and posting. Item D states, any member of the public may request an item be placed on the agenda. It further states, however, since many matters may be resolved or satisfied by city staff, the public should contact city staff first to determine if the specific issue needs or even requires action by the city council. A fair legal argument can be made that should a member of the public not feel that a specific issue has been resolved by city staff and that it falls within the purview of the city council, it shall be put on the agenda. This is the case regarding the following request to have an item put on the next Blue Lake City Council meeting. Should staff clarify why city staff should bill two-thirds of their pay bill role expenses to the sewer and water funds rather than reflecting actual time spent on the many funds the city has? And why the city manager bills three-fourths of their pay role expenses to the sewer and water funds rather than reflecting actual time spent on the many funds the city has? I could understand not putting that topic on the agenda. Should staff decide to attempt to clarify, please have them do so by email prior to the cutoff date and time for items being placed on the agenda. Therefore, we will all have a record. Clearly, their required account, accounting accuracy and a failure to do so by the city staff falls within the purview of the Blue Lake City Council. The item I wish to put on the agenda is as follows. Discussion of potential action regarding how the city staff pay role expenses are distributed amongst the city fund accounts. Please acknowledge receipt of this request and forward it to appropriate city staff for comments or clarification. I also request this be read into the record at the next Blue Lake City Council meeting as correspondence to the council. Kent Sowatsky, thank you. I know I have it, it's just been buried.
Yeah.
Okay, um, is there any other council correspondence, Mandy? Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Oh, comment.
Okay, Kent Sowatsky.
I have an outstanding public records request. You basically have a, a payroll system where if somebody doesn't put down specific hours, this is what automatically submitted. I did some outreach to uh, other entities. Oh, I did wish to make comment on the other entities dropping Zoom. I'm sure other entities have. But I'm not aware of any city council or the county or any of those meetings allowed to be before that do not continue to have Zoom. So you would be an exception to that rule. I think maybe the Harbor District quit, but they're, they're the poster child for non-transparency. You may not want to join that group. This particular, particular topic is of major concern. Our sewer and water rates are based upon how much money is charged to these funds. If you look at the, the funds here, if I recall, the uh, the city manager has a three-quarters of them charged there, ten percent goes to the general fund. And then I think one other, one other thing, maybe Powers Creek gets a small amount. That's not how time's spent. And so it actually is, is a, is a, is fraud in my opinion. Uh, I have required to go ahead and give you notification of this. Have you addressed the issue? Should you not desire to say, I think Mr. Edgar thinks this is kind of humorous. But I picked up the grand jury form and I also have potential contact with the state attorney general and the PUC on this topic. So we'll see where that particular thing goes. And it's always interesting to see somebody on their phone during a communication here.
I have a life outside of this. I'm talking to my daughter.
Please step out of the room, please.
Yeah.
It's okay. If you're not paying attention, you might.
You should address the other people that do it too then.
I'll address all of you who do, that's fine. So anyway, that's a separate topic. We don't need to go there at this time. Uh, but I, I strongly think that you should have closed session item as soon as possible to go ahead and discuss this. I'm waiting for my public records request to verify how payroll is gone with the city manager's account. And I did contact, uh, I think it was Real Dell, their city clerk down there. Total between sewer and water is, I think twenty-seven percent of their time is billed to that. I contacted Mr. Eli uh, over in the city of Trinidad and his, his, his estimate of time he spends is not three-quarters of his time, but it's twenty percent. They don't have the same sewer system we have, but he does have time and everything. So you're going to find that uh, that something's wrong here and I think you guys should take care of it instantly. Otherwise, you will be complicit to the fraud that's being done upon the public. And we wish to have, have this taken care of. Potentially large water and sewer refunds are justified. Uh, you cannot go through a process and, and, and not charge the correct amount. It's an accounting principle. Everybody's things should be going to the correct one, public works. Parks and Recs, all these things have to be correct. If they're not done, you're not filing the standard accounting principles and you're going to a lawsuit. Thank you, my team to speak.
Is there any other council correspondence? All right, we'll move on then to the consent agenda. We have four items on the consent agenda. Council minute meetings, warrants and dispersments authorize the city manager to negotiate lease agreement with Jock's Organic Chocolates. They're coming back. And authorize the city manager to negotiate and distribute a memorandum of understanding and with Providence Retro Memorial for the continued use and operation of the Skinner store. Is there anyone that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? I just have a couple of things on the minutes. Just spelling Lynn, Lynn Glenn and Julie Christie are misspelled. Lynn is L I N, Glenn and Julie Christie is C H R I S T I E, I think. I think that's okay. Anyone else want to pull anything from the agenda? Are there consent agendas?
Are, are we pulling the minute?
Sure.
It's not a substantive change.
It's not, yeah, it's not a real change. I, I meant to email you about it. I would have just emailed you about the spelling. Not anything. All right, uh, in that case, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second, motion made by Angela Scholl, second by Elizabeth Kate, you approve the consent agenda. Further discussion from council, any discussion from public? Julie?
Thank you for having me on the, I did do this, I'm going to call me all of them. Um, I, I, I do want to take a, um, I compared them to the minutes from February. Um, we're in May, so you know, but we're good thoughts and ending up.
Kent Sowatsky?
Think this has to do with the dispersment, your check registry also, that's on consent, I understand. Is that correct? Yeah, I did wish to make note that there was an item on there, a few of my head collections on. One which I saw an appraiser made an appraisal, I believe, on the water tank thing and I think the cost was six thousand dollars. I wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, I also strongly support continuing the contract with Jocks down there. My understanding is, I was one of their first landlords and I built a place in Eureka on, on Old Town. Fantastic person. We need to keep these few people we do have left in business. Apparently their business, they sold off, it sounds like, and it went uh, third corner. Fire owner to now went bankrupt and he's taking it back. So we strongly need to do whatever we can to negotiate these leases in a, in a fair manner to keep these few people we have left who are willing to participate in Blue Lake's business. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask what the three thousand dollars to Eureka Broadcasting Company is?
Uh, that's our marketing campaign that we do. So we market all the events in Blue Lake. We market all of our parks and recreation, um, skating programs and um, Annie and Mary Day, anything that brings people out to Blue Lake.
Is that an annual fee?
Um, it's a, no, it's not an annual fee. Um, this is our second year um, working with Eureka Broadcasting. Um, so it's, it can change, it changes depending on what our budgets are, what our needs are, and then the number of events that we're um, hoping to promote.
So it increases in the summer.
It's part of our marketing.
Three thousand dollars, what period of time is that paying for?
Uh, it's for a year.
All right, um. We had a motion, a second. Calls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Um, we are now on council. Reports of council and staff. Um, Chris, did you attend any meetings you would like to report on?
Okay.
Elise, did you attend any meetings you'd like to report on?
Did attend meetings. I don't have my notes with me. I was at a public safety commission meeting early in the month. We have a new commissioner on the public safety commission. We talked about a lot of different things, but I don't think I have anything specific to report there. Um, I was at an RCEA meeting last week. We spent some time on budget and um, talking about how the CPUC, who is currently is, um, the CPUC consists of five members appointed by the governor. And I think I might have mentioned this last month, how one of the new um, regulations uh, going to the um, community choice aggregators, um, of which uh, RCEA is one, is that we have to procure resource adequacy for not just a monthly average, but a slice of day. So we've gone from um, having to purchase um, resource adequacy certificates for twelve, twelve sections of the year to two hundred and eighty-eight sections. Now, what that's done is make um, make certain kinds of um, energy completely unaffordable. So what the board voted to do um, this week is to basically um, reduce our, our um, our carbon um, goals are no carbon goals um, and renewable goals to the um, down to a much lower degree. We had some very high lofty goals of uh, carbon-free energy going forward, but um, essentially with the new regulations, that is um, just not possible. So uh, RCEA is um, going to be reducing our um, our goals for um, for resource um, adequacy over the next, at least the next budget year. Um, and hope that the CPUC comes to their senses and changes some of this because it's just um, really driving inflation. And um, and the industry just isn't ready for the goal, for what they're trying to make us, make us do.
What, what was the part that's going to cost more? The coal, it was going to cost more or for the carbon ones?
No, it's the carbon free.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those one are going to cost more.
Well, it's costing, right now the industry can't provide it, right? We're looking for a twenty-four hour day and so much of it is solar. And once the solar is no longer online and the batteries are depleted, then we have the overnight um, power generation that's coming from coal, natural gas, nuclear, all the things that are not solar battery. And so um, the prices have just gone completely out of the world and, and, and um, way, way, way beyond the cost of generation. And it just doesn't exist. Maybe in five years it'll exist. But right now it doesn't and we're being forced to buy it now for a period of time where there just isn't enough. So um, anyway, it's a kind of a crazy, crazy um, equation.
Mapping.
Yeah.
Need to remind me that the new council member is, or the new um, not council member, the planning commission, on the planning commission, who the new person is.
Need to remind me that the new council member is, or the new, um, uh, not council member, the planning commission, on the planning commission, who the new person is.
On the planning commission. It's Ed Nickerson.
That's right.
Is that all you have?
Yeah, I think that's all.
Okay. Well, I went to a lot of meetings. This many, I've got so much paperwork. Um, I discussed earlier how on May third, the League of Cities met in Rio Dell and, uh, we had a league meeting first where they go through all the legislation that's coming up. Um, with, at the state level and, and the recommendations from the league. And then we did have a tour of the cannabis farm, as I mentioned, and then we had a dinner at Scotia, which was, uh, Scotia Inn, which was very, nice. Um, the next, uh, meeting that I went to was the Humboldt Waste Management Authority meeting at five thirty. And we passed our budget that night, but we had to have another meeting in two weeks because there was something left out of the budget that we had to vote on. Um, the next meeting I went to was the chamber, which I will let, um, Angela was really the person that was the liaison there because I was just there because I, I'm in charge of the vendors and we're up to eighteen now vendors. Um, then I attended the Humboldt County Association of Governments meeting on the sixteenth and I have all the information there if you would like to read it. Um, nothing really new, but we did pass, we did have our, um, findings of our unmet transit needs. So there was a long discussion about, bus routes and, and that kind of thing. Uh, and then, um, continuing with the meetings. Oh yeah, then the HWMA had to have a meeting at four thirty on Monday, the twentieth. So I went to that meeting and I think it's it. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Then I've, I was the alternate for the Blue Lake Economic Development Commission meeting on Tuesday, May fourteenth. And, um, they talked about the Blue Lake Community Vision Update, um, Branding and Signage Project. They discussed the town square construction, the sports complex development concept. There's an idea where, the, where the B and B, um, bathroom company is in the district. There's an idea for some folks to come in there and build a, um, what they call sports complex. The Container Village Development Concept was discussed, the Bike Park Development, Botawatt Community Project. The Northern Side of Taylor Way Master Plan and Parcel Subdivision. And the Powers Creek Restoration Project Update. And then they went through the Parks and Rec event schedule for the summer. Um, okay, that did it for me. Next.
Uh, so redeck was canceled this month. Um, it's always canceled in May due to Memorial Day. Um, and then the only other meeting that was this month was Annie and Mary Day, which, uh, was the chamber. Because we just talked about Annie and Mary Day, um, and, um, with the vendors that Adeline is working to get and then the music. The, um, Humboldt Folk Life Society is, is organizing. Um, there's going to be some increased, publicity for it this year, which is really kind of exciting. Um, I know last year, I tried to drive down Greenwood at, I don't know, four thirty and the street was full of, of cars, which was nice because it was, there's people in town spending money. So, um, but that's pretty much it for Chamber. Um, they are looking to do another mixer potentially out at Camp Bauer. Uh, in September and looking to partner with McKinleyville, particularly on that Chamber event to, um, garner more support.
Okay, I also, uh, attended the League of Cities down in Rio Dell. Um, and we, uh, listened to Speaker Nick Crawford, who, um, was amazing. And the work that he's done there in Rio Dell to help pull them back together. And he just talked about a lot of the work that he does. Um, and then I, um, went to the, uh, Arts and Heritage Commission meeting, first one in a long time. And, uh, we discussed different ways to bring art into, uh, Blue Lake, uh, with the idea of, uh, painting hydrants, um, art-based traffic calming. Uh, we talked about the, uh, Powers Creek, uh, District Master Plan and saw a slideshow, um, about ideas that are going around for different, um, types of development that could be done there. And, we talked about switching the time and date and it will now be the second Monday of every month at six PM. Because there are time conflicts with this using this space. So that's been a problem.
Okay, thank you all for attending those meetings and, and remember that you are liaisons to these meetings and not really members of the meetings. So you want to be more of a, watching and recording what happens. Um.
I forgot to say I went to the Parks and Rec meeting. I don't want, I don't want them to feel left.
You know, I was waiting, waiting for someone to say that, but I wasn't sure who was the person. So it was that, well, you did have one.
I did.
And?
And we have a great commission. We have some new members and it's very lively and there's a lot going on and new, um, new chairperson is Jan Henry. She's owning it.
Oh, great.
And, um, and yeah, so we had a really great, um, had a great meeting, just talking about lots of events, things coming up.
Oh, good. Okay. Yeah, I, I, that was in the back of my mind. I thought, I think they had a meeting actually.
I should have mentioned too that the Public Safety Commission was attended by somebody from the Sheriff's Department, whose name is escaping me at the moment. Um, anyway, Captain, somebody. Anyway, so we had a nice conversation about, um, about.
His role in Blue Lake, is he going to be our?
No, no. Captain, I can't remember. Anyway, um, it was a good meeting.
Okay.
Awesome.
Alright, um, our city manager report, um, includes the sheriff contract negotiations and of course we finalize that this evening for the hundred and ninety thousand. Under Parks and Rec, the town square construction project is going on as we're all very aware of. The Arts and, uh, Heritage Commission is choosing some colors and stamp patterns for the concrete areas in the, in this town square. North Fork Lumber has committed to donating the lumber for the shade trellis and then the bark. The bike park, sorry, bark.
Bark.
Bark bike. Bike, I don't know. Uh, staff recently conducted a meeting with our bike park stakeholders. And they discussed their timelines and their workdays. Summer camp is moving forward and I've noticed that it's going to have a theme every week, which is really exciting. And the first week is Aloha Week, which is, just really fun. And every, every one of the weeks sounded like something really fun going on. Um, Annie and Mary Day, staff are working to prepare the city for Annie and Mary Day. Planning the Bill Nessler Car Show is always fun to get the weed whacking and the streets ready for that. Concerning capital improvements, the Greenwood Road lateral replacement project is in, is in progress as we're all aware. And the Greenwood Road Truck Improvement Construction Project has been closed for bidding as we've decided this evening. And the wastewater treatment plant headworks installation project has been completed. The work was performed by Mercer Fraser. Library improvement project, we discussed that, the ADA ramp. Then under property negotiations, we've negotiated into an exclusive agreement for the possible purchase or lease of the city corp yard. We, that was passed meeting. City staff are discussing with Jim Morehouse and James Brown regarding property development and acquisition for property located in Powers Creek. Um, and then concerning the Blue Lake Power Plant, the city has legally obtained control of the former Blue Lake Power Plant site. And when I took my bike ride yesterday, I noticed a big sign on the side of the fence that says, property of the city of Blue Lake. So that's pretty exciting. Um, the city will work with our resource agency partners and permitting agencies to address cleaning, cleanup issues along with development of a request for proposal to site cleanup and demolition. Um, concerning the Powers Creek District Master Plan and Parcel Subdivision, Storyland Studios has created a draft master plan for the Powers Creek District. And this is funded by the Economic Development Administration. And then planning and engineering projects include the FEMA water tank funding, which is ongoing, the housing element, update, which is ongoing and staff working closely with our HCD representatives to address implementation of various initiatives. Okay.
Can you tell us, like, I remember seeing Jim Morehouse and James Brown's, uh, proposals in the fall of twenty-two. Are they kind of resurrecting that at this point or?
Um, yeah, so we've been having discussions about getting the ENA signed. Um, council had given authorization to enter into the ENA, um, and so, um, I think, I don't think things so much stalled out as they slowed down. Um, they had been working, um, to try and get some drawings pulled together and some ideas and concepts and that had kind of slowed down. I think their architect had a lot of projects on their plate. Um, and, um, so they were just kind of working through that process. Um, but they are enthusiastic about getting that signed. So we sent over, um, the revised draft just with updated dates, um, last week and they said that, uh, they would be working to get that executed. So, um, I anticipate we'll be entering into an ENA with them very shortly as well. So that'll, that'll be good. That's two, um, two properties that we'll be actively pursuing, um, development options and scenarios for.
And then, um, the sheriff's contract, what's the status of the twenty-three, twenty-four contract?
Uh, there, we have a twenty-three, twenty-four contract, um, and we don't, I mean, it's, it's, it's the existing.
Settlement made in terms of the cost.
Uh, we have a contract with an existing amount and there are no, um, signed amendments or authorized amendments. So, um, we have a contract in place for the amount that we had going into the budget year.
Holding strong on that one.
Any other questions or comments on manager's report? Uh, public input on the manager's report, uh, Julie and then Kent.
Oh, yes, thank you. Um, I would like to, uh, to, I'm really excited to be here. To, uh, like, run show when I was little, right around skate rink and I think people along their, sort of, um, application to bring back to the city. So thank you each, um, for making sure she got the credit for that. Um, I would like to, um, maybe not get our manager's report so much for example, vinegar or beer or tea. I think it's important that through the mission meetings, it's almost like the manager runs the meetings. Um, I feel like when it's time for a manager's report for council, well, actually being recorded, that we get thorough, you have the report and not it's time, but it gave, we thought a lot more on it. Still be like, um, moving that sounds like it's hard and still, I'm, I'm productive again. So I would, I think it's, when we have it just recorded, we need no man ever to act. When, um, we get that out, people are saying, so they're not reported, so it's not, it's okay. So we get all those pretty, kind of, thank you.
Kent.
I'd like to kind of second what Julie said. I know that, that you spend a lot of time reading things that we have, but I think it's to hear, tell us about what's on her report.
Kent Swatki, regarding the, um, FEMA subsidy or FEMA, uh, grant process for the water tanks. I believe this portion of the grant, uh, if you read the thing later on, the tanks will, are anticipated to be funded as far as being replaced. This part is per design portion. And you have your cart in front of your horse. Uh, until you have such time as you have a lease, to enable you to do something, why would you design something when there's a very good chance that that, uh, tank will not be allowed to be on that property? What is the public perception? It wouldn't be allowed on a property. It's because of, uh, the same reason we don't have a working relationship with the tribes. They're moving, they're coming out, they're getting their own sewer water system. We're going to take a hit on that. But another topic on this one is if, if somebody can't get along and work with your city manager and that's something that will be, impede the process. In other words, if it was my property, I would not be engaging in any kind of agreement with the city of Blue Lake. When, uh, your city manager was still your city manager. And that's the level of lack of cooperation you get when you have somebody who can't work with people in the public. And so it's very unlikely and it's totally up to, uh, totally up to the owner there, what she does. Uh, but I definitely wouldn't do a design until you actually had a lease that was acceptable to her, if you're ever going to get one. So thank you much for speaking.
Any further discussion, public input? Yes, Erin.
Um, Erin McClure, sorry, I drove fourteen hours with a load of horses today, so pretty tired to get here, but, um, um, thanks for Ken for saying all that. He's absolutely right. And, um, you, the card is before the horse. And the other thing is, is that I, you are all aware that I've had a horrible trespassing problem with that property, which is even worse now. The people that go up there, many people in this room have been caught on the cameras. The other thing is, is that, um, people are now telling me that the city leases this property and we can come on it anytime that we want. So I've now very active with the sheriff's department and I will not put up with that. So Marty Granger, Jennifer Kramer, Jennifer Kramer has actually even invited people to my property. So I would be very grateful to all of you if you could put a stop to some of that. Thank you.
Alright, um, is there any other comment on our reports of council and staff? Um, just a couple of announcements I want to make. Um, the Wanika Plant Sale is June eighth, Saturday from ten to one. We all know Annie and Mary Day is July fourteenth, Sunday. And tentatively, we have the citywide yard sale set for Saturday, August seventeenth. More information to follow on that. Uh, future agenda items.
Can we get something from the city attorney, um, in regards to, in regards to council member Edgar being on both city payroll and on the council. I'm, my.
He's already provided it.
Perfect. Okay. My assumption is that that was all cleared through the city attorney.
It was cleared prior to any job offers being made.
Okay. And I, I assumed that had most likely happened, but I didn't know if that was something that could be read publicly, you know?
I can provide. I'll, I'll send it to all the council members.
Okay, thank you much.
Um, are we in need of a separate meeting in June, a, uh, another meeting in June because of our budget?
Yeah, typically we have two meetings in June. We do the second Tuesday. Um, we do kind of a presentation of, um, usually it's the, the ma- the major funds. Um, usually the, the city, um, accountant has the, the major funds done and is ready to present those. And then at the, uh, fourth meeting in Ju- or the fourth Tuesday in June, um, he'll do the final presentation of the budget.
Cause that, so that would be the eleventh of June then Tuesday, cause that's the ECD meeting that you were telling me I,
Yes.
Need to go at four thirty and then this one is at six thirty.
Yes.
Maybe we could do this one at seven.
No.
She doesn't want that. Okay.
Anything, let's do it earlier.
Well, I, I have another meeting. I have the economic develop.
Here, so.
Yes.
Bring your sleeping bag.
I can make an adjustment for EDC because that'll, I'll have to be at that too. Um, so if we want to, I can put out something to the. It, uh, it usually does.
So you think that could maybe be earlier? Alright, so we want to have a meeting on June eleventh at six thirty. And that will be just budget?
Yes. Unless there's anything.
Yeah.
That comes up.
Something that comes up.
We always reserve that second.
Yeah.
Tuesday for that.
And then our regular meeting on the twenty-fifth. Okay.
I will not be in attendance either.
You will not be here for the budget. Okay, so we have to make sure that we are all here.
No surprise to me. I'm glad that you're going. Somebody's fun, hopefully.
Yeah, she is. Okay, um, any future agenda items, any other? Okay. Uh, we'll be on item fifteen then.
We don't have any future agenda items?
Budget.
That's it. For the June eleventh, yeah.
Yeah. Alright. All right, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Was this?
Second.
On accident? No, it's not part of the, part of the ones since.
Okay, there's a motion to adjourn made by Angela Schultz, seconded by Oh. All right, uh, I suppose we could have, have public input on future agenda.
Kent Swatki, uh, you have a, you have a document called the City of Blue Lake City Council Rules and Responsibility Protocol Manual. I hope, hope you will consider putting that in the agenda for discussing sometime in the near future to update. So it reflects the current, uh, situation, and you all familiarize yourself with that particular document. So that you won't find yourself in violation of those protocols, because that's where you're at right now, so they come up to you speak.
All right, now we
Future agenda item, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Um, I think we need to take a look at that document that, uh, Kent's talking about, last time it was updated was in twenty thirteen. And it does, it does have a statement in it that says that no council member can be employed by the city for one year after leaving office. So, um, I think that's certainly not the same thing that we're doing. It's printed in black and white, so we should probably have a look at that document, and if it's not in alignment with how the city wants to conduct business, it should be brought into alignment. Is that addressed in, um, Brian Ross's email?
All right, um, did you make a motion to adjourn?
I did.
All right, Angela Schall made a motion, seconded by Elizabeth Kay to adjourn, any further discussion? Uh, Lori Ponti? I, is this on the emotion to adjourn, Lori?
No, I'm just wondering exactly what was Kent's, um, request, what, what document was he, was he referencing?
Is that a future agenda item? That was a future agenda item.
I believe he was talking about the council handbook. Is that correct?
But it was supposed to be a future agenda item. All right.
Yeah, where is that?
All of our documents are in the city hall, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Accessible.
Yes, it's accessible, it's a matter of public record. All right, let's move on to, uh, motion to adjourn.
Is that right, or do I need a request manual? Or is it something that I can find through the council?
Hi, Jerry.
Yeah, through the website?
Yeah, you can submit a public records request at City Hall, and we will gladly help you.
Okay, thank you.
Motion made by Angela Schall, seconded by Elizabeth Kay to adjourn. Calls in favor say aye. 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 Opposed? We're adjourned.